I would like to call the May 27, 2020 regular meeting of the Fenton Community High.
How do we move the chat out?
100 regular board meeting to order.
Click on it, Patty.
I'm sorry?
Keep going, Paul.
Go ahead.
May I have a roll call, Mary?
Yes. Jallowick?
Jallowick?
Here.
Peyton Howell?
Here.
Figueroa?
Here.
Rico?
Here.
Ramirez?
Here.
Tink Poppa? Wedeman?
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum. Please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, for all.
All right, thank you, everyone. James, please read our Fenton Mission, Belief, and Bison Way statements, please.
Sure. Our mission statement states cultivates successful, passionate learners through rigor, relevance, and relationship. Our belief statement, successful, passionate learners thrive when we champion innovative teaching and engaged learning. School and home collaborative effectively. We provide a safe, secure, and caring environment. We infuse social, emotional learning into academics and culture. Diversity empowers our learning and community. We prepare students to fulfill their civic responsibilities. The Bison Way. Students and adults at Fenton High School create a safe, caring, empathetic environment where we believe in each other, respect diversity, communicate openly, grow together, and hold each other to high expectations to become the leaders and innovators of the future.
Thank you, James. We will now open the public hearing regarding the application for waiver or modification of state board rules under school code mandates to waive a portion of Section 27.6 of the school code to allow driver education to substitute for one semester of physical education. Presentation of legal notice of public hearing published in the Daily Herald Newspaper on Wednesday, May 13, 2020, along with the required notices posted on Fenton's website 14 days prior to this meeting. Email notification to FEA and FLOS Unions seven days prior to this meeting. Advanced notice by US Mail to our local state legislative officials. Presentation and discussion of the proposed application to waive a portion of Section 27.6 of the school code to allow driver education to substitute for one semester of physical education. Questions and/or clarifications are in order at this time for any persons in attendance.
There are no individuals attending on the public hearing meeting, so there's no visitors wishing to speak.
Okay. Thank you, Jim. Then if there are no further questions or clarifications, I announce that this public hearing is now closed.
Does that include us? Are we a part of that public hearing?
You are a part of the... I'm sorry?
Are we a part of the public hearing?
Yes.
Okay. I just, I think that there needs to be clarification. So, James, if you could do the same for me that you did, or do the same for everybody else that you did for me, because I was under the understanding, you know, that driver's ed was already part of the PE curriculum. And so, could you clarify for the public or whoever's gonna watch this? What the driver's education program is changing into?
Absolutely. What we had in the past, basically, is eight weeks of driver's ed as well as eight weeks of PE. So, students usually, your sophomore year takes eight weeks of driver's ed, then eight weeks of PE. That equals to one semester. What this waiver does, basically, Patty and the rest of the public, is that driver's ed now becomes a semester class. That's the difference. Okay? So, they're not gonna take eight weeks of driver's ed, then eight weeks of PE. It's just driver's ed. What does that do? So, what's the remaining? What, how do we beef up driver's ed if you wanna look at it? There are many other things that we could do during that time, whether it's roadside safety, flat tires, inflation of the tires, texting and not driving, so we could beef up truly our driver's ed program. That's how it's different. It also opens up our students to take more electives in some sort of way, so they are not obligated to take a PE class. Part of this, too, Patty and the public, is that it's part of the compliance. For us to have this program, it has to be approved through a public hearing.
Thank you, James. Any other questions? Or clarifications?
Paul, you froze. Okay. Paul, you froze for a second.
He still froze.
Uh-oh. I think James is frozen too now.
Okay. I'm here.
So, then there's no... James, can I just ask a question? So, then there's not an issue with the kids not getting enough PE? What they will have in three and a half years is enough because they've got the full semester of driver's ed. Correct?
That's correct. There, we're still in compliance. That would be a waiver to replace one semester of PE with driver's ed. So, we are in compliance by the state. That's a great question.
All right.
Okay. I'm sorry, my screen went frozen, so I only caught the tail end of that. But I just wanna make sure that there are no further questions? Did I miss that?
That's correct.
Okay, we're good. Okay. Then, James, do we have any requests for public comments?
I am looking at my email now as requested. We do not have any public comments.
Okay. Thank you, James. Please share the student recognitions with us for this evening.
Just real quickly, we wanna recognize the wrestling team. Coach Brian Hastings has prepared a video for us that Jim will display to everyone. Just wanna put out there that one of our board members nephew is a star wrestler for Fenton, and I just wanna recognize that. Danny Ramirez.
Yay, Danny.
All right. Hey, thanks. I'm Brian Hastings, the head wrestling coach at Fenton. We'd like to thank the Board of Education, the administration, and the staff of Fenton for their support and recognition of our outstanding athletes. So, we have Quinn Wilcox and Jeremy Peashgorge, and Danny Ramirez could not join us. Jeremy Peashgorge was a state qualifier last year in 2018-19. He was not recognized, but had an outstanding career, had 95 career wins, two-time conference champ, three-time regional champion, and a two-time Fargo national qualifier. So, Jeremy had an outstanding career. Danny Ramirez was a three-time conference champion, had 109 career wins, two-time regional champ, and three-time Fargo qualifier. He won two matches at the state tournament to place him, to finish in the top eight of his weight as state this year. Danny and Jeremy are both juniors, or seniors. I wish they were juniors. They, throughout their four years in the lineup, the Fenton wrestling team had a record of 82 and 14, won three regional championships and two conference championships. So, they had outstanding careers. And then Quinn Wilcoxen is a junior in his third year of wrestling. He was a sectional champion this year, which is very impressive, had a 32.9 record, 25 pins, and then finished in the top 12 in the state for his weight class. So, awesome year for him, and we expect great things from him next year. And then Jeremy and Danny will be wrestling in college. Jeremy at Co. and Danny at Wisconsin Oshkosh, and they're gonna thrive there. So, thanks a lot for your guys' support. You guys wanna say thanks? Quinn?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for the recognition, and thank you for the support. Really appreciate it.
Awesome.
Yeah, I appreciate, you know, that people actually know about wrestling. It's actually something that, you know, we strive for, to get our names out there, you know, and that's also one of the reasons I do wrestling, and I thank you for the recognition. It means a lot. Appreciate you.
All right. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
All right. Hey, awesome. Okay, thanks a lot. That's it. Appreciate it. Appreciate you guys.
Thank you, Coach.
Thanks, guys. And then, Quinn, I'll see you in a little while, all right?
All right.
Hey, see you, Jeremy. See you, Casper. Nice seeing you, buddy.
See you, Coach. Good to see you, too.
Later, guys. Have a good one. Bye.
Where's the picture of them? I didn't see it. Did you see it, Michelle?
Yeah, I got a picture of all of us with them on the screen, too.
Okay. I'd love you to do that.
We have some technical difficulties to show the video, but at least we have the audio.
Okay.
I saw the pictures, too.
Oh, you saw... Yeah, I did not see the... I didn't see them either. I didn't see the pictures.
Okay.
I'll send it to James.
All right.
Okay. All right, then let's move on to the district reports, please, James.
Sure. The first one really is about the Board of Education meeting dates. As you all know, we had two choices, option A and option B. Overwhelmingly, option A won. Just a quick description of option A. Instead of the fourth week, I'm sorry, the fourth Wednesday of each month, the board decided to go with the third week, third Wednesday of each month. There are some months, like July, where it's the fourth week. You guys have a copy of the schedule. This will be voted on during the consent agenda. Moving on to the next slide, just really a COVID update report. The first slide should show, I don't see the... It's there. I hope you see it, what's posted. It should be a slide basically saying how many cases are in the United States, about 1,600 cases with over 98,000 deaths. In DuPage, there's 6,467 positive cases and 331 deaths. We receive this report on a daily basis, so we're constantly monitoring the situation. Next slide, Slide 14. In general...
No, I'm getting bad feedback. Is it really getting bad feedback?
Yes. Okay, there we go. What are we doing right now as an administrative team and as a school, if you could hear me? There are three scenarios we're working on for the upcoming school year. The first scenario is remote learning 2.0, a bolstered version of what we have, is what we're planning to incorporate. Second one is a hybrid program, which is a hybrid learning program, which is a mixture of remote learning and in-person. And obviously, the third one is in-person. Let me just dive in real quick on this, on the three scenarios. First one is, the first scenario is remote learning. Why is it 2.0? Because we want, and we will bolster remote learning by providing professional development to our teachers, improving connectivity to our students, and improving technology tools. We also want to improve learning for all of our students and to improve our parent communication. We have and will continue to collect and utilize student, parent, and staff feedback through surveys, thought exchange, to bolster remote learning. We will work with our staff via task force to bolster remote learning. The end result is a better remote learning experience for all stakeholders. Please note, we are still in the brainstorming and planning stage. The heavy lifting and hard work will start shortly. The message to the board is that the staff are in a forward-thinking mode. We want to anticipate any hiccups regarding remote learning, and we are being proactive, and we are trying to stay a couple steps ahead of the crisis. The second scenario is the hybrid learning model. The hybrid learning is a platform of remote learning and in-person learning, so it's a combination of both. It is important to point out that the default of the hybrid learning is remote learning, which we just described, and not in-person. In-person or Phase 3, 4, or 5 of Restore Illinois Framework Guidelines, guidelines, has not been constructed by both ISB or the Illinois Department of Public Health. We are still waiting on these guidelines. As you can imagine, it is challenging to plan for a learning platform without a clear guidance or guidelines. Here's what we do know. We have to practice social distancing as number one. We have to wear masks. We have to wash our hands and provide hand sanitizers. We cannot have, we cannot have all 1,500 students in the building at the same time during this scenario. And we will, we will need to wait for the guidance from these institutions. With that said, our Fenton teams will continue to plan for this scenario as best we can. More to report later. The third scenario is in-person, very much like the hybrid. We're working on it, but we have not truly started on that, so more to come at our next meeting. But the message here is that we're being proactive. We're working on these three scenario. We started a couple weeks ago. We will flush that out as the days go by. Next slide, basically, is just to give the board and the public a...
I'm not seeing any slides.
You're not seeing slides? Jim?
Nope. I don't either.
Oh, James, I thought you knew that, yeah, we're not seeing the slides.
I can see it.
At least I'm not.
I am.
Okay.
You are.
When you're looking, when you're looking at all the tiles, you can pin the one that has the slides on it, so it's not a little...
Correct.
Does it change his slides?
Put it in the tile form, and then find the small one that has the slides and pin it.
Pin it. Correct.
If you go to the three dots, go all the way to the bottom, and then there's three dots next to present now. And it'll ask you to change the layout, and then you can go to tile form. Then you can, it should come up, everybody on there. And then you can pick the tile one, and then there's a little pin and unpin button.
Did everyone see that?
I see it now.
All right, thumbs up if you see it. All right.
I see that.
Yep.
We're all good?
Leo?
All good.
Okay. So, let's, if we can back up a couple slides, I think these slides are important. If you could look at the last slide, Jim? One more. We're gonna go ahead, and I'm gonna go ahead and pin that. Thank you. This slide's really just, I just wanted to make sure we have a visual of what we're working on for, at least the board and the public. Here are the three scenarios we're looking at. Remote learning 2.0, once again, is a bolstered remote learning model that we will construct. The heavy lifting has not started. That will happen shortly. And the hybrid learning, really small left bubble there, is a combination of remote learning and in-person, and obviously, in-person. Those are the three scenarios, and that's what I've described previously before we utilize this slide. Next slide, please. This just gives the board and the public a guideline of how remote learning, what we're talking about at these meetings, you know? If we look at the remote learning, that's what we're trying to flush out at this time. We really haven't touched the remaining two scenarios, is some of the stuff we're asking is what worked in the spring semester? What do we need to deliver differently is the second question. And as you could see, the different topics that we need to answer and flush out this next couple of weeks to bolster remote learning. What do we have to do in regards to health and safety, food service, transportation, equity in learning, attendance, extracurricular, lunchroom gyms, and so forth? And you could read the rest there. So, each one of those bullet points underneath, probably there's eight, nine, 10 more action steps behind it. So, it's a colossal task, and the first time administrative team looked at this, it was daunting, and we needed to really take a timeout. Okay, let's break this up in chunks. So, that's where we're at in regards to that. Then the next slide, real quickly, spent time on this diagram. Right in the middle is Fenton, okay? And the three scenarios we're talking about, I think it's important for the board and the public to realize that we're not in an island, right? We are influenced by the governor's office, the DuPage County Public Health, the Illinois Department of Public Health, ISB, as well as the CDC. We have to find those guidelines. It's difficult to create a scenario when guidelines are missing or guidance is missing. And on top of that, the outer layer, all of these folks, all of these agencies, as you know, is basically influenced by the COVID virus. So, I think that's an important visual to demonstrate. And if you take, like, for example, the governor's office, they have their own circle of influence. Perhaps it's the federal government, as you know, as CDC and so forth. So, I think this is important. I was talking earlier to Juliette about this. She totally understand and just made a comment. Hey, look, we understand that you need guidance and must adhere to those requirements by those other agencies, like ISB, CDC, and the governor's office. The next slide is another diagram in regards to the continuous cyclical meetings that we are, we take on every week in regards to the COVID situation. At the district level, I have two superintendents meeting every week. Yovan meets with his principal. In our administration, our team here at Fenton meets every day. In regards to municipalities, we meet with Bensonville and Wooddale once a week. And at the state level, we meet with them once a week, the Regional Office of Education, as well as the Department of, I'm sorry, DuPage County Public Health. So, we're receiving this information every week, fresh information, new information, so we're able to make the right decisions. Next slide, in regards to the COVID update. We are committed to feeding our students and family throughout the summer months. As you know, summer season has started, so we're serving and distributing food Monday to Thursday, 10:00 a.m. to noon. Two trucks are coming from Northern Food Bank trunks, one on May 29, which is this Friday, and the next one is June 29, from 4:30 to 6:00 p.m. And so forth. May 16, I don't know why I have May 16 to 26. Okay. Just some notes to remember here. The magic number is 40,000 meals. So, from March 16 to May 26, we have served over 40,000 meals, which is outstanding. Our recipients and our families and students are very thankful. We're working very hard to make sure our kids and families are fed. We have also built a nice relationship with the Wooddale-Bensonville Food Pantry. I know some of the board members and myself volunteered our time last Saturday distributing food. We made contact with the director over there, and once a week, they will deliver some produce or some milk dairy product for us to distribute to our families, which is another great resource and relief for our families. Patty, you were gonna say something. I'm sorry.
Actually, I would, because there was another date, the food truck was gonna be at Fenton, but it was not one of those dates. Remember, it was, what, last week, but got canceled or something like that, or two weeks ago?
Yes, that's correct. That, yeah, that was...
I think that's your timeframe of serving those 40,000 meals.
Correct.
March 16 through May 26.
Yes. March 16 to 26, approximately 10 weeks, we served over 40,000 meals, including, that includes breakfast and lunches.
James?
Yes.
So, this 40,000, is this combined with District 2, the 40,000 number, is that just out of Fenton High School? Or is that combined with, like, the program with District 2 and all of the, all of the schools combined? Or is this just out of Fenton?
This is just out of Fenton, Juliette.
Wow. Okay.
Okay. So, great job there. We're committed to that. Folks have to eat, as we like to say here. And the last slide here that I have at this section is just wanna recognize three outstanding, excellent teachers there. Newly tenured Christopher, Atria, Matthew Lynch, and Jose Mencia. We're very excited for them to become tenured. They're excellent teachers. We're looking for great work, great work from them in the upcoming years. Also for the board to know and public is summer school starts June 8 and ends July 16, all in remote learning mode. And summer hours for our district here, our campus started this week. It will go from May 26 until August 7. Okay. That's my report.
Okay.
For now.
All right. Thank you, James. And I just wanted to add that, so we're all aware that the administration is painstakingly in constant meetings and keeping on top of any new information. And, I mean, we should all be proud of them that they're staying on top of this. And then, as well as Bruce, with the financial implications that this might have on the district. And, you know, right now, which is a big unknown, but preparing for whatever scenario is gonna happen and how that's gonna impact our finances, you know, possibly through, you know, more sanitation. Nobody knows what path it's gonna be, but they're all keeping on top of it through constant meetings, both in and outside the district. So, with that, let's move on to the...
Can I ask a question first, Paul?
Sure, sure.
James, have you gotten a big response from parents as far as the options that you've presented to them? Have you gotten a lot of feedback?
I'm sorry. Could you say that one more time, Jackie?
Have you gotten any, a lot of responses from parents about the possibility of the different scheduling? Or what their think is so far?
As you know, Jackie, we have put in a couple surveys out there, two to our staff, one to our students, and two to our families so far. We have not presented the scenarios to the families yet, because it's... All the communication we put out there to the public is that be prepared for a remote learning start in the fall. As you know, I instructed our staff, hey, look, we're, we're bolstering remote learning. Expect that mode for the fall semester. I think it gives everyone a clear picture of what to expect this upcoming school year. But once that develops, Jackie, we will share that. Right now, we're not there. The heavy lifting, the heavy work will start shortly.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I ask a question, James?
Sure.
What kind of response did you get from the surveys about the remote learning that you had sent out? Did you get any kind of significant response from that?
Sure. I think, I'm gonna put Michelle here, but I'll start off. We ran a thought exchange. Great question. As you know, there's two surveys that we ran with parents. One was basically, how was remote learning? That was a regular survey. Three things that the takeaway we wanted. They wanted more accountability, more communication. And at times, depending on the parent and the family, is it's too much work or too little work? So, that's what we're getting. Okay? In regards to technology, there wasn't really some issues. It wasn't significant that, in regards to Wi-Fi or connectivity. There were some minor ones, but we were able to give them a hotspot. Michelle, in regards to thought exchange, any takeaways there from parents or the community?
Yeah, we had about 150 participants. I think just over 150. Probably would have liked to see more. Those who did respond said that their tech needs were being met, but they were also responding on a tech platform. So, you know, we're trying to consider ways to reach out to those families that have not been fully engaged, you know, and with us. We're probably gonna do some phone calls and things like that over the next few weeks, but maybe some focus groups. But as for the thought exchange, some really good feedback. They said, you know, a weekly schedule. One of the top four thoughts were all about how teachers could give them an outline of what's expected of the students so they can better support their child at home, which I thought was great. You know, this partnership is gonna be essential for us to all be successful in a remote learning setting. And then, you know, accountability came up, like, how do we ensure that students are engaged? And there's, you know, there's an expectation that they're engaged, and they won't just get the grade that they were earning before this all happened. get the grade that they were earning before this all happened? So, you know, going into next year, we're really thinking about expectations and how to ensure that students, you know, still with us and stay engaged in their learning. So, yeah, really those two items, just communication between the teachers with them and the accountability piece.
Thanks, Michelle.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah, if there's no other further questions, then we can move on to the consent agenda. Does anyone have any questions and or comments regarding the consent agenda?
Paul, real quick, we still need to do the budget implication for COVID-19, if I could have that introduction. Jim, if you could put that slide up, there's a couple more before the consent agenda. Real quickly, we discussed COVID-19 safety, we've discussed bolstering remote learning, bolstering SCL in some form, and food distribution. I think it's important for the board and the public to also know that, hey look, we're also looking at how COVID-19 may impact our budget. So, I'd like to introduce Bruce, he worked real hard to prepare for this presentation. So, I'm gonna turn the mic to Bruce.
Hi, everybody, can y'all hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Yeah, as James said, you know, we've all been working, you know, and very aware and networking and talking to our professional colleagues and associations to, you know, stay abreast of what's happening, because things are developing, you know, at a pretty rapid pace. So we wanted to, we went through this presentation a couple of weeks ago with our administrators and had some good dialogue, good feedback, and we wanted to certainly keep the board aware of what's happening and what we're doing to, you know, deal with this kind of circumstances that we're living right now. So, Jim, there you go. We just kind of wanted to run through the sources of revenue, and this is similar to a budget presentation, but also it's in real time in terms of what the implications are now and what we anticipate for next year. So, real estate taxes, as you all know, that's about 80% of our revenues, our real estate taxes, so those are critical to the success and operation of the district and functioning of the operation. We're hopeful that our June collections, and you've probably heard about this in the news and whatnot, with counties agreeing to, you know, postpone taxes and waive late fees and things like that. DuPage has a program in place where you can apply for it if you have a COVID-related circumstance. So we're, that makes us a little bit nervous, obviously, it's good for folks who are struggling, certainly, but it also has an impact on us in terms of our revenue cash flow. As you know, you know, taxes are paid in June and August, September, two primary distributions. So we're hoping that our June collections, that'll be a real indicator, I think, of what is yet to come, or what we can expect to have come. Normally, we have very good, strong tax receipts, our collections are 99% or more of taxes, which is really fantastic. So we're very grateful for that in DuPage County and this community in particular. We typically split those taxes over two fiscal years, you know, we get about half in now, in June, May-June, and that's the other half in the fall. So, you know, the majority of folks, or I should say about 40% of homeowners in DuPage County pay their taxes through escrow. Those were told by the Treasurer's Office of DuPage County to expect, that should happen as their plan. It's other payments of businesses and whatnot, we're not sure if those are all gonna be paid in a timely manner, if there's gonna be delays and so on. And then the impact on the future CPI, you know, there is a lot of talk about what that looks like, it's, you know, we're based on the previous 12 months, is our levy is tied to the CPI and what that looks like. But also, it's tied to a potential property tax freeze as well, and what that looks like, and that is, would not be great for the district to freeze taxes being the primary source of revenue. So, these are all big, big pieces that are the primary source of revenues, as I said, for the district. So, if we can go to the next slide. Other sources, our corporate personal property replacement taxes, those are taxes that we receive from businesses, businesses are not doing well, they'll likely, we will likely see a reduction in those funds for next year. We budgeted this year about 1.4 million, we expect to receive just about all of that, we have received just about all of it, we're expecting one more payment. But that may be cut by as much as 30, 40, 50%, we're not sure, we're kind of holding our breath right now to see what happens there. Earnings on investments, as you can imagine, interest rates are really plummeting, we expect that to go down quite a bit next year. Reduced food service fees, as you know, we're serving food out there, but we're not doing any à la carte sales or full-price meals for reimbursement, so we will have a reduction in that object of fee areas, as well as we're projecting, not only this year but next year. Tuition income, not a huge source of revenue for us, but we do expect reductions and will experience reductions this year and next year. And then, reduction in student activity fees, athletic admissions, things like that, those will be, are off quite a bit under budget this year and expected to continue next year. So those are the, all the local sources of revenues. Now we get into the state sources, EBF, that's evidence-based funding, which is what replaced general state aid. We are, we just heard over the weekend that the governor, or last week, they passed, the legislature passed a budget, that includes, we believe, or understand it to be flat funding, which we're pleased about that. If we can just keep it the same, we can live with that, but a reduction in that, because there's been anywhere scenarios with, we might get half of what we are expecting, and that would be not good. We get close to $2 million in EBF funds, so it represents state aid's about 10% of our sources, of revenue sources. And the budget really is contingent, the state budget, on Illinois receiving some federal funds of about $5 billion. So, they're counting, banking on that, and we are banking on that as well. So we'll see how that plays out. And then the categorical payments, that's kind of our transportation, state aid, special education reimbursement. We expect only two payments this year, they've told us to budget just for two, we learned that about a month ago, and then we're only expecting two payments next year. So, you know, again, that'll be a reduction in that portion of state aid. And then we get into federal revenues, the CARES Act, you've probably heard a little bit about that, that's the COVID kind of related funding source, that Title I schools, which is what we are, we're getting a portion or an allocation based on our Title I funding. For us, it's about $185,000. It does require districts to continue paying employees and contractors, and the funds are supposed to, the funds are, the grant is opened up now, so we can start applying for that now, but we can use it for things such as professional development, technology to bolster remote learning, things like that, food, we can offset some food costs with that, and, you know, other things that they've outlined. Medicaid reimbursement, that's not a huge source of revenue for us, but it's $2,000, but with less services and reimbursements there, we expect that to go down this year and next. So that's the revenue side of what is looking, so our issues really for next year are more revenue-related than they are expense-related, but we wanted to give the board, the play board, a depiction of where we're at and what we expect it to be, and what we're kind of forecasting right now, although it continues to be a work in progress, just based on information and developments that come from the state and the federal government. Salaries, just to kind of go through some of our expenses at a high level, we continue to pay employees as directed by this state. We do have collective bargaining agreements in place through FY21. We continue to pay stipends, substitutes, our permanent subs, we are still paying, and our bus drivers are being paid as well through the end of this year. And then our benefit piece, medical insurance, IMRF, we already know what our medical insurance rates will be for next year, we shared that at a previous board meeting. IMRF, that's our non-certified staff participate in that retirement program, that will likely increase because that has a direct impact on the economy and earnings, implications of interest earnings. Unemployment compensation, this is kind of a growing area right now for us, as people, you know, believe that they will, you know, be out of work, people are substitutes, for example, things like that. We've seen an increase in claims and for unemployment compensation benefits, so that's happening as we speak. The purchase service piece, additional costs for online professional development, training, and this kind of flows over, not only this year, we've experienced some of those costs, but next year as well, to bolster remote learning, impact to contractual payments for professional services, transportation, custodial, food services, all those things will be impacted by what's happening right now with the environment we're in. And then we get into some more purchase services with possibly some legal service pieces there, contracted technology, production in athletic officials, reduction in travel costs, things like that. So there's some positives, I guess, too, where we would see some reductions in some costs there, not huge cost centers, but nonetheless, we should see some relief there. And then we get into our supplies, or purchase services, I guess, as well, reduction in costs for water and sewer, trash collection, and then insurance premiums, and we'll get into that actually a little bit later this evening, what that looks like. Here's our supplies, additional costs related to cleaning and disinfecting supplies, cleaning of buildings and buses. We hope to use some of that CARES Act funding that I talked about a couple of slides earlier to use for our PPE needs as well, so we hope to devote some of the funds towards that. Potential reduction in classroom supplies, we may see that next year as well, what the delivery of education looks like, cost of additional online resources, potential reduction in athletic supplies, and utility costs, which we're experiencing some of that right now with a reduction in both electric and natural gas. Capital projects, you know, we're deferring those, as the board is aware, any major projects we're putting on hold at this point in time, and then impacted tuition costs, special education placements, what that might look like going forward in terms of that cost area. So that's, next year, we budgeted for a balanced budget this year, we expect to continue to have a balanced budget this year. We do expect a unbalanced budget next year, based on what we know today. We hope to have better information going forward, or I should, some more positive information going forward, in terms of what, where we're at with tax collections, where the state aid is at, and where, if there's any additional federal sources that will be available for districts to utilize. But we do have a, for 2020, these are, you know, projected amounts, so for 2020, you know, we're at nine months of reserves, so we're right there, somewhere where we were the previous year. We do expect a slight dip in 2021 and 2022, and those are because of deficit budgets we're projecting right now, based on the information we know today going forward. But again, we'll continue to develop the budget, refine the budget, and minimize that as best we can, and to keep any reductions that we need to make to not affect the classroom as much as possible. And we're not at that point right now. The good news is, we do have reserves to cover the shortfall for the next couple of years, so that's, we're in a far better, stronger position financially than many other districts. So I do want to emphasize that point, we do have the reserves to cover shortfalls for shorter periods of time, but obviously, you know, if you get into, you know, four or five years, some other things would have to happen. And then, the next step, you know, as I said, we're continuing to develop, refine the budget for next year, we continue to monitor state, local, federal decisions and the impact on us and what that means. Tighter controls, continue to operate with tighter controls and operating nimbly, it's probably, you know, James's mode of operation certainly is operating nimbly, so, that's why I kind of threw that in there. And then, we'll present and approve the tentative budget in July, so that's kind of our timeline, but we will continue to update the board at the June board meeting and going forward as we work through this unusual circumstance. So, with that, if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them for you.
Bruce, got a quick question. You said employees will be paid to the end of the year, you meant school year, school calendar year, and not the regular calendar year, correct?
That's through, yes, through June period, if you are correct, Paul.
Okay, maybe I misunderstood, but okay. Thanks.
Sure.
Okay, thanks so much, Bruce. Thank you for sitting on top of that. James, are there any other items under the district reports that we still need to cover before we go to the consent agenda?
No, we don't, it's been completed, thank you for asking.
Okay, no problem, thanks.
Am I part of this agenda or the...
You're leader on, Michelle.
Sorry.
It's okay. We won't forget about you.
Okay, then let's move on to the consent agenda. Do we have any questions or comments for anything on the consent agenda?
Just real quickly, right there, letter H, CTE Summer Maintenance Hours, if there's any questions from the board in regards to that, that we do this every year, it's basically, CTE stands for Career and Technical Education, that's our automotive, our small engines, our woods classes, there's equipments in there, heavy equipments in there that needs to be maintained during the summer time. So what we do is basically, the teachers that teach those classes are given hours to maintain, replace, clean those equipment. We found out that by doing so, it's much more economical, and our teachers know their equipment much better than a third party, so just wanted to clarify that if anyone had any questions.
Okay, thank you, James. Then if there's nothing further, may I have a motion that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda as presented?
I'll motion that, Paul.
Thank you, Mary Ann, may I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Jackie, roll call please, Mary.
Hey, Howell?
Yes.
Patty, you're on mute. Patty, you're on mute. Hey Patty, you're on mute, we're taking a vote.
Yes.
Figaroa?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes.
Ramirez?
Yes.
Kit, you're on mute. Can't hear you.
Can't hear you.
We can't hear you, Kit. Kit, we can't hear you. We'll take a yes if you give us a thumbs up. Thumbs down means no.
I'm gonna thumb?
Yes.
Yes, thanks, Kit.
Wait a minute.
All right, the motion has passed. We move on next to the discussion. We move on next to the discussion item only regarding property casualty liability insurance renewal. And Bruce, that one is yours.
All right, I'm back again, folks. Briefly mentioned earlier in our presentation, the property casualty liability renewal, what that looks like. I did address a memo to James and the board on page 92 of the packet. We belong to an insurance cooperative that includes about 185 school districts, primarily northern Illinois, northeastern Illinois. The program includes, and the sheet there, I think it's the green sheet that's included with your packet on the invoice, basically the outline of billing. It's broken into, the costs for the program are both broken into fixed and variable costs. And I'll kind of briefly explain what those are. But the fixed are just standardized costs that are the same rates applied to everyone in the co-op based on, you know, the size of your co-op or your district and vehicles and building values and things like that. And then the variable costs are based on claims and actual contributions that are required to commit to a loss fund. So the premium is, will be $81,802 and that's a combination of the property liability coverages and school board legal and all that. And then we do take on the optional fiduciary liability as well for another $2,000. So that's about a 17.6% increase. It seems fairly high. It is fairly high. The areas that are drove that increase really were properties, the property portion of the renewal at 27, almost 28%, and then cyber liability at 243%.
Wow.
Yeah, that's, that's a big thing and I'll kind of talk about that a little bit. The property really, that's a, that's a boost and it's really a sign of the marketplace and the claims that continue to pound the industry. Catastrophic claims, they're also using what they refer to as conductive storm modeling to being relied on for insurers to determine rates. Increases in sexual abuse claims have been major concerns for insurers. There's, there's a list of other items too. Those are the primary drivers, increasing the property aspect of the coverage. The cyber liability is another piece that is, that is huge, growing. Jim Batson, I know, doesn't sleep most nights thinking about this, but, you know, ransomware, you know, hijacks of systems and things like that are growing exponentially. Our base coverage last year was a million dollars. The co-op decided to get to a minimum of $2 million, so they doubled the coverage. They also gave members the option to increase it by another million dollars, a million to $5 million. Jim and I kind of discussed, we decided along with James that we should, just for an added measure of protection, we increased it by another million dollars. So that was about $1,600. But I think Jim might be sleeping a little bit easier at night by boosting it up a little bit to have coverage in case of, you know, anything like that happening. We, I think we have very good controls. Jim can speak to that far better than I can. But again, there's a lot of determined people out there to hack into your systems. If you backed out those two areas of the renewal, the other lines of coverage is about 6.6%. So that's a little bit more reasonable, I think. But again, the drivers really were the, were the property piece and the cyber liability. Just on a final note, the renewal, even though it's, it's higher than what we would like to see, we're still less than what we were back in 2015 prior to joining the co-op. So I did indicate that in my memo, just, just to kind of have a point of reference there to, for you to refer to. But anyhow, this would take place effective July 1 and it's for the one year this coverage. So that's, that's what that is shaping up to be for next year for our property liability coverage. Any questions on that?
How many are in the co-op?
There's about 185 districts, Patty.
Is there, you know how right now there's been some relief going on with property casualty insurance for, for people during the COVID era? Is, is there any opportunity for that? Have you heard from the insurance companies about that at all?
You mean for like auto insurance and things like that, Kit? Is that what you're referring to, like the commercials that are?
I don't necessarily, I mean, just in general for, for our operations and the, the rest of the school districts that are participating in the co-op. I'm, you know, because obviously it's not going to be the same as the needs of a regular auto policy. But are there circumstances where we're not a higher liability for the insurance companies that the co-ops could leverage?
Well, they, they do. And, you know, I think there, there's, there's a lot of, actually, these insurance companies that they have utilized, I think, I can't think of the name of the biggest one we used. But they're, they're having, the co-op, believe it or not, is as big as we are, are struggling to even get some insurance companies to, you know, produce lines or offer lines of coverage for the, for the co-op because of the exposure. So I think because of some of the reasons, you know, with the property and the cyber liability and the sexual abuse and things like that, there's, there's a lot of risk to take on. And their standards are pretty high. They're only going to deal with, you know, A-plus rated companies and things like that, insurance providers. So, you know, they, they aren't going to go with anything less than that. So I think they have high standards in terms of who they'll engage in coverage or offer, allow to bid on the coverage. But and, and there's, there's just a, you know, terrible marketplace out there right now with, with claims and activity and storms and all the other things happening throughout the country.
Yeah, I get it. Thanks, Bruce.
Sure.
All right, thank you, Bruce. Then if that was a discussion item only. The next item is the 2020 summer curriculum hours and summer workshop hours. And Michelle, that is, that is yours?
Yeah, here I am. Sorry, I didn't have my board packet printed out. I, hi, everybody. How you doing? I am, I'm asking for us to consider the curriculum hours and workshop hours. And I'm asking for approval on the proposed hours. So I think it's up on the screen. I've outlined it a little bit differently than I usually do because there's some added features into how we're handling our summer this year. I'm going to start us off with the, what I'm calling the traditional summer workshop and summer curriculum hours. We usually give curriculum hours for teachers to revise their curriculum, work on new courses. If they're new teachers of a course, we give them some time to work through that with a previous teacher of that course. If there's new textbooks, we give ours. So those are still things that we want to support teachers. And although it's not as robust this year because, you know, in some cases we're in a little bit of a holding pattern, but in many cases, we don't want to hold anybody back from moving forward and continuing to design the kind of highly effective learning experience for kids. You'll see at the top, we're going to spend about $19,000 on curriculum development as we traditionally do. And then we usually do workshops, but we have canceled any of the ones that were on the schedule. There was one for evidence-based reporting. We went ahead and canceled that for right now so we can focus on bolstering remote learning. So typically, or last year, we spent about $55,000 over the summer for these traditional type of curriculum hours and workshop hours. And this year we're spending about $19,000. So we, we cut it in more than half of what we usually support. You know, that's just being fiscally responsible. We know the state aid is being cut and we, we want to be very thoughtful about how we're spending our local funds because that does come out of local funds. So then in the first table, you'll also see though that we have something that we're doing called COVID curriculum development and COVID workshop. This is very specified to bolstering our remote learning efforts. We're going to be using Title and our CARES Act funds for this. And we, it's truly to support our teachers. Every teacher is going to have to do a heavy lift this summer. They have been so far doing a wonderful job of shifting and pivoting like on the spot. But we know that it's going to have to be a lot more robust than what we've already been doing. We're bringing on new tools for them and they're going to have to be trained in those. We're, and they're going to have to redesign some of their instruction to be online or all of their instruction to be online. And we want to ensure that they have the time and the support to do that. So, you know, we, there's a few areas that we know we're going to be supporting through workshop. We're encouraging them to workshop first, then move into some of their curriculum development. You know, like I said, bringing on more tools, tech tools that will help them bolster their instruction. How to support students' SEL needs after a time of being so isolated? What are they going to come back and what are their needs going to be? And how are we going to address those in a highly effective way? What are some of the pedagogical approaches that we're going to have to consider? Brick and mortar school cannot just be transferred into a digital format without considering the approach. So we're going to have to support them with the approach and, and what are the considerations we really need to look at more closely when we go to a remote type of setting? And then the communication strategies. I mean, I said it earlier, our parents are going to be more of a partner than ever before. They're the ones sitting next to their children at home. And how do we ensure that those communication strategies are super strong? So we'll be workshopping on all of those. And we're giving every teacher 10 hours of workshop, paid workshop. We'll probably be offering much more than that for CPDU opportunities and things of that nature. But, and then beyond that, every teacher will get 10 hours per course they teach. So let's say a teacher teaches two English fours and three English threes. They will get two 10-hour stipends for that because they teach two different types of courses, not for every period they teach, but every course they teach. So we're hoping that really helps them move through this work in a, in a highly effective manner. We're going to be alongside of them. Our DLs are going to be there, our instructional coaches, our instructional tech coordinators, our SEL committee. Everybody's engaged right now. We're really proud of everybody. Nobody's shying away from this challenge. It's a relentless challenge, but we're relentless at going after it and making sure everything's really good for kids and families when they, when we get back in the fall. So this is part of the effort to do that and we're going to, we're putting a lot of money towards it. I mean, you can see on the sheet, it's quite a bit of money. It's at a rate of about $25.50 per hour for curriculum development. And it's about $20.25 for workshop hours per hour. So it's a large investment that we, we know has to be given and that we know will have a high impact in the end. We want to do this well and we want to do it right. So, and our teachers are more than happy to engage in this work over the summer. That's their summer and they've been, they've been in an extreme situation for a while. So for them to continue at this, we're, we're really grateful. Any questions?
Okay. Thank you so much, Michelle. Very, very good presentation.
Yeah, it is. It's, it is a lot of work because they, I mean, they, they weren't prepared for remote learning, you know? They had e-learning, okay, for a couple of days, but, but to jump in and have to do it for, you know, two and a half, three months, it's, I'm, I'm glad that the, the training is continuing because there, I'm sure the learning curve is still quite steep.
Is there a chance for them to collaborate with teachers from other facilities to like share learned experiences and stuff like that as well? Um, yeah, many of our teachers and our instructional tech coordinators and our instructional coaches belong to professional networks just naturally. And some of the professional development we're looking at may come from outside experts. So we have some expertise right within our building that's very strong that will be tapping teachers to teach one another. Some are far out there along the continuum, but then the outside agencies, we have, some of their workshops and webinars are alongside other people from across the nation. We also have been working with two and seven, the curriculum directors over there about how to kind of align our forces a little bit and get some of our teachers from two, seven and 100 all talking with one another. So, yeah, we're definitely trying to tap in and extend our networks. We're working with an agency right now called Highlander Institute. They're out of Rhode Island. When this all started, they, this agency helped, was contracted with the state of Rhode Island to be a support network for them. And they're helping us kind of position ourselves for quality professional learning this summer. And they have a great network of teachers and of professionals that are going to help us along the way as well.
Can you expound at all about like the comments from the parents? And I'm sorry that there was only, would you say 150 responses for the e-learning that's been going on this semester? Like did, things that you took away from them that can be worked on this summer?
Yeah, we, we just took a deep dive into it today. Actually, the Highlander Institute helped facilitate that discussion with us. They pulled all of the data together in a meaningful way for us and with us from what the teachers are saying, what the parents are saying and what the students are saying. And really, yeah, we're, we're getting a lot of really good takeaways about equitable practices and, and how to make sure, you know, we're meeting the needs of all of our students. But really the parent ones, it, it wasn't as, there was some, it really was focused on how do we set up the right communication system between teachers and families so we can be partners in the learning experience with the students? So that's at the foundation of what distance or remote learning is. It's flipping the script. For so long, we relied just on the student, right? They're in front of us, so we can rely heavily on them. And now it's kind of flipped. We, we need to rely heavily on that, that parent piece. And we have to figure out what they need and how, how we can support them and what the expectations are. You know, this isn't homeschooling. We're still schooling, but how can we help them set up organization systems for them? How can we do, give them the resources that they need? And that's what we're trying to pick apart right now. I, I hope that's helpful, Patty.
Yeah. It is, yeah. There's a lot of pieces to try to put together, I'm sure.
I would imagine that this also kind of deepens and allows you to retool the blended learning curriculum that we discussed in previous meetings and how this maybe accelerates it too?
Yeah, definitely. Thank goodness we had some people already working to that end that could help support others moving forward. And it definitely accelerates it. You know, and it's not just, like I said, turning it into a digital format. What this is, is thinking about personalizing learning for students. Now we have these ideas of self-paced and now we have these idea of more relevant and meaningful inquiry that they can drive themselves, drive some of their own learning. Because it, it can't be that day-to-day little activities because that's just not how it's going to work. The parents are asking for weekly goals and weekly outlines, not daily as much. They're also asking for structure, like my kid needs structure. They need to have a little less of this like whenever and whatever and more structure within some of the planning and scheduling that we're doing. So, yeah, thank goodness we got a head start kid on some of this learning about it, but it still is quite a shift.
Yeah, I would imagine. Definitely.
Michelle, really quick, does, does the, does these workshops also assist teachers with the changing to a virtual environment? You know, that, you know, we know over a longer period of time can be taxing and more stressful and unnerving. Is it helping the teachers to, on how to deal with that?
Yeah, they'll be beyond, you know, teaching them new tech tools that are more robust. There's a, we've always been focused on social emotional learning and social emotional wellbeing of our students, our families, our staff. So we've, we're focused, we'll be focusing on self-care. We'll be focusing on just how to stay positive and connected and continuing to try and build relationships with the students in this type of format and with one another. You know, the isolation isn't healthy for anybody. So, you know, trying to figure out how to still have that social emotional, the social emotional bonds. You know, and burnout, we're reading articles, Paul, about it. Every day, our instructional coaches and our administrators and division leaders are hopping on webinars, reading articles, trying to put all these pieces together. And that is definitely one piece of it. We have to consider the balance in everybody's life and what they're trying to manage right now. I mean, I have a three-year-old at home too right now. So, you know, it's a lot.
Okay.
Wow.
Thank, thank you, Michelle. Very good. Does anyone have any other further questions? Okay, then. May I have a motion that the Board of Education authorizes administration to utilize the requested 2020 summer curriculum hours and summer workshop hours as presented?
I'll make the motion.
All right. Thank you, Mary Ann. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Juliette. Roll call, please.
Peyton Howell?
Yes.
Yes.
Ramirez?
Yes.
Ting Pao-Pang?
Yes.
Jowick?
Yes.
Figueroa? Figueroa?
Leo, you're on mute. Leo, you're on mute.
Yes, sorry about that.
It's okay.
Weedman?
Yes. Okay, the motion has passed. Now we move on. Michelle, it's you again. We have the new 2022, 2021 textbook purchase.
Yep, this one's really quick. Yeah, the textbooks are, we do this every year. Our teens review their needs. We encourage the use of open source where appropriate. We definitely encourage the use of digital textbooks even before this, this world changed like it had. But we have, hold on, let me grab that. We have four major areas that are focused on new resources this year. World Languages, we've been rolling in a new textbook series now for a couple of years. So this is just the third phase of it. It's a really strong textbook series, all digital. The supplementary resources are very strong. And so we're bringing in the, the level three books this year. AP is also bringing in an anchor text. I like to see that literacy piece coming through, a culturally relevant literacy piece. So they're bringing in a novel. English four is a brand-new course, so we had to get some resources for that. They're not working out of a traditional textbook. They're going to be working out of a, somebody's got to mute. So the, sorry. English four is bringing out a few novels, just three anchor novels. It's, it's there to anchor the learning, but there's a ton of supplementary nonfiction that they're exposing the students to, discipline-specific texts as they work through passion projects, as we've discussed with English four earlier. Math is bringing on a new text. They've actually been piloting it in a couple of the areas for the last two years for a very, very low price point. Now that we're actually adopting it, it's, it's kind of a heavy lift, but it's, we think it's worth it. It's an inquiry-based text all online again. It has a lot of cross-curricular connections. We were able to see the students in action using this resource and they were highly engaged. When we stopped and we talked to them, they said, you know, it's like we're learning science with math. And they were really excited about it. And then, yeah, those are the, actually, it was three areas. I apologize for that. On my notes, I had one other thing. So World Languages, English four, and math is where we are bringing in new resources. And we think they're quality and we think that'll help keep the students engaged. And most of them are digital format, the novels are not, but that's okay. Kids need to pick up a book and read it by hand sometimes.
All right. Thank you, Michelle. Anybody have any questions regarding the textbook purchases?
The, the language ones, the Spanish, well, World Language, they're good for five years. Is that, so like year one and, one and two, they're still good, the digital format?
Yeah.
Yeah, they'll be good for another two or three years and then we'll have to update and renew.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Michelle. Then may I have a motion that the Board of Education approve the new textbook purchase for the 2020, 2021 school year as presented?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Mary Ann. And I'm sorry, who's second?
Juliette.
Roll call, please, Mary.
Peyton Howell?
Yes.
Ramirez?
Yeah.
Ting Pao-Pang?
Kit, you're mute.
Yes.
Jowick?
Yes.
Figueroa?
Yes.
Rago?
Yes.
Weedman?
Yes. Okay, the next item is the, James, is the Board of Education an FEA memo of understanding?
Sure. Real quick, what that is, is we had a request from the FEA Association to sign an MOU in regards to what took place from basically March 16th to May 21st. As you all know, we had a task force to lead the charge on COVID-19 e-learning, active guide, and remote learning later on. This basically documents the agreement between the district and the association. They're, they're asking for this request. I, I support their request. We've discussed it. I've discussed it with Paul as well as our legal counsel. I think we need to go ahead and sign this memo of understanding with the FEA as a sign of unity and as sign of support for each other.
All right. Thank you, James. Anyone have any questions regarding this, this memo of understanding? Okay, then may I have a motion that the Board of Education approve the FEA memo of understanding regarded, regarding COVID-19 spring semester as presented?
Thank you.
I will make the motion.
Thank you, Patty. May I have a second?
I will second the motion.
Okay, thank you, Mary Ann. Roll call, please, Mary.
Peyton Howell?
Yes.
Figueroa?
Yes.
Rago?
Yes.
Ramirez?
Yes.
Ting Pao-Pang?
Yes.
Jowick?
Yes.
Weedman?
Yes. All right, the next item is the treasurer's surety bond. Bruce, this one's yours.
All right, thanks, Paul. Last month, as the board may recall, the school treasurer was appointed for the 2021 school year. That was me. Thank you very much for that. This month, the, the next step in the process is to approve a bond for the treasurer. So we have a resolution for the board to act on tonight. Once all these documents have been authorized and approved by the board, we will submit it as required by law to the Regional Office of Education. So we're just asking the board to approve this resolution tonight so we can fulfill all their, our obligation regarding these, this process of these documents.
Thank, thank you, Bruce. Anyone have any questions? Then may I have a motion that the Board of Education approve the resolution approving the surety bond of treasurer?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Jackie. May I have a second? I'm sorry, was that Juliette?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Juliette. Roll call, please, Mary.
Peyton Howell?
Yes.
Ting Pao-Pang?
Yes.
Jowick?
Yes.
Figueroa?
Yes.
Rago?
Yes.
Ramirez?
Yes.
Weedman?
Yes. Next, that motion has passed. Next item is the driver education waiver, James?
Sure, this is what we discussed in the public hearing. We're asking the board to approve the driver's education waiver.
Okay, anyone have any question? This was discussed before. Anyone have any questions on this? Okay, then may I have a motion that the Board of Education approve the application to waive a portion of section 27.6 of the school code to allow driver education to substitute for one semester of physical, physical education as presented?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Jackie. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Roll call, please, Mary.
Peyton Howell?
Yes.
Jowick?
Yes.
Figueroa?
Yes.
Rago?
Rago? Juliette?
Juliette, I'm mute.
Yes.
Thank you, Ramirez?
Yeah.
Ting Pao-Pang?
Yes.
Weedman?
Yes. Motion has passed. Now we move on to the notice and dismissal of certain educational support personnel. Sam, could you please present?
Yes, we have one individual listed on the report that we are not renewing for next school year and simply just ask for this non-renewal to be approved.
Okay, thank you, Sam. Anyone have any questions?
Nope.
Okay, then may I have a motion that the Board of Education approve the resolution, resolution authorizing notice and dismissal of certain educational support personnel as presented?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Mary Ann. May I have a second?
I will second.
Thank you, Patty. Roll call, please, Mary.
Peyton Howell?
Yes.
Figueroa?
Yes.
Rago?
Yes.
Ramirez?
Yes.
Ting Pao-Pang?
Yes.
Jowick?
Yes.
Weedman?
Uh, yes, yes. Okay, motion has passed. Last item is the 2020 Chromebook, Chromebook purchase. Jim?
I'm not sure if you can hear me. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, we can hear you, Jim.
Yeah.
I can hear you now.
This was what we discussed last month and sort of got your, your blessing to move forward with this process. So these are on, in the process of being ordered. We expect them in, in early July, but we wanted to get the process going. This is the formal approval of that purchase prior to that actually being released.
Okay, that's, we discussed that in the last meeting. Does anyone have any questions regarding this? Okay, then may I have a, I'm sorry. Okay, then may, may I have a motion that the Board of Education approve the fiscal year 2020 purchase of 390 Dell Model 3100 Chromebook computers from CWG for the amount of $156,000?
I so moved.
Thank you, Patty. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Kit. Roll call, please?
It was Leo.
Oh, Leo, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. It's Leo, okay. Roll call, please, Mary?
Yes. Peyton Howell?
Yes.
Rago?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're here. But you can see.
I can't see her.
There she is.
I think she just joined, right?
Rago. She's waving her hand.
Yes.
Are you muted?
Thumbs up.
Ramirez?
Yes.
Ting Pao-Pang?
Yes.
Jowick?
Yes.
Figueroa?
Yes.
Weedman?
Yes. Okay, that motion has pa, has passed. We move on to the committee reports. First one, Bensonville Community Foundation, Juliette and Kit. Is there anything to report?
We have, had no meetings.
Okay.
So, no report.
They're not having any virtual meetings either, right?
No.
No, okay. Okay, thank you. Finance Facilities Committee, they're, that's on hold right now. And let's, Mary Ann, do you have anything to add?
I do not.
Okay, thank you. And then IASB delegate, just a few things. I just wanted to go over really quickly. I attended the May 7th IASB DuPage Division meeting. That's, other board members were, excuse me, were in attendance. And the big concern at that meeting was the depth of curriculum. That was the big challenge. They were concerned on how curriculum depth was being covered in their respective school districts. Property tax income was another big concern at that meeting from the other districts. It seemed they had lower reserves and were concerned about the impact. It seemed they had lower reserves and were concerned about the income, uh, going into the next year. And then, how to, um, and that actually ties into what Bruce was saying, was the, the, there's just a concern on how the tax revenue, uh, income is going to affect the, uh, funding for the school districts with what, that ties in with what Bruce, you know, was, uh, telling us before. And then, uh, another concern was, um, communication changes, um, hierarchy and, uh, communication flow within the district from superintendent to the board and then out to the community. May 12th, I attended the Executive Committee meeting. The, what, the big concern there was also, uh, curriculum depth, upholding standards, ways to ensure that the most possible, uh, of curriculum is being covered. The, um, another item was the resolution, season is coming, uh, for the Triple I Conference in the fall and that proposed, that proposed resolutions at Triple I are due by the end of June. Uh, another item that was discussed was the fall meeting, the topic for the fall meeting. And overwhelmingly, everyone agreed that, um, that, uh, the COVID-19, um, education in the COVID-19 season had to be addressed and we all agree that we, the, the best thing needed was to have a panel to discuss, to discuss and to address, uh, what, what has worked and what hasn't and not to resort to story time. To, to just have point-blank, uh, address items that, um, uh, that each district, that every district is going through and to see what is working and what hasn't. And also that the next spring meeting, um, they're looking for, uh, school district to host the spring meeting and they're looking to change that to Saturday morning. I attended the May 21st, uh, IASB DuPage Division meeting and there, the, the main topic was, uh, as James, uh, discussed, were the three options for the fall, in-class, virtual and a hybrid. There's a lot of concern about, um, going hybrid or, uh, going back to in-class. But a lot of questions and as James pointed out, there's absolutely no idea which way this is going to go. Nobody, there's, there's no clear direction. And then also there was the, um, continuing questions on how that'll work, you know, will every classroom then have, you know, if we go to a virtual, will every classroom have to be sanitized after each class, you know, after, after every class? Uh, will the hallways be one-way? How is lunch going to work? You know, can't be in the cafeteria? Will they have to have it in class? You know, bus, you know, there'll be social distancing on the bus. What normally is one bus trip, will, will that same bus have to make three bus trips? You know, just the constant i, issues and items like that. Those were all questions that, um, all of the districts were, uh, were wondering about. And then also the same items that Bruce brought up regarding cost, you know, who's going to bear the cost for the additional sanitation? Will we have to need, uh, additional custodial staff to sanitize the classrooms after each, uh, class? And then also, another item that came up is that, um, there's current legislation to add to this, to the three different scenarios. There's, there is legislation that, um, there, it will, that, um, it may be up to the parents as to which scenario they choose. So, the district needs to be prepared to possibly have all three scenarios and the parents then decide which one they want for their child. Um, and a lot of that rests with, i, is because of, um, some parents will be working, some won't, and that's to accommodate their, uh, situation at home. But that's again, up in the air, that's just, uh, there's no clear direction on that yet. And then liability, what kind of liabilities are going to be for the district regarding COVID-19 moving forward? Uh, that's it in a nutshell. There's an upcoming Board President Virtual Meeting on May 28th, which I'll attend. And that's all I have. Len? Anything to report on that, James or Leo?
It was James.
Sure. Sure. Uh, real quick, we had a Len meeting on May 15th, uh, regular meeting there. Uh, basically, um, there were three big parts to it. They recognized the retirees, uh, superintendents who are retiring this year. Uh, they encourage us to plan for the fall semester, as you discussed and I discussed earlier, uh, plan on remote learning come fall, uh, plan on a hybrid, uh, program in an in-person. They also basically told us, is plan for a, uh, a flat budget coming from the state, uh, for fiscal year, uh, '21. That's it.
Okay, thank you, James. Uh, Nedsec, Leo and, uh, Patty, and congratulations again, Leo, on becoming the chair for Nedsec.
Yeah, thank you. I was there and cha, well, I'm going to say congratulations to James too. He's the chairperson for the operation, operational board meeting and, um, with the governing meeting. So, it was fun. My first meeting, I get lost and here I am.
He, he did fine. He was fantastic. So, it, it, this is just a, uh, a demonstration of, uh, the Fenton le, leadership in DuPage County. Um, as you all know, the Northern DuPage Special Education Cooperative is, is, there's approximately 13 different school districts that feed into it and Fenton is taking a leadership role. In my part, uh, we had a, a regular board meeting, kind of like what we're doing now on, uh, last May 11th, uh, where there's a consent agenda and some of the stuff in the consent agenda is basically what Leo, um, uh, discussed, appointment of, uh, a new, uh, chairperson at the Operation Board as well as the Governing Board. Obviously, Leo's in the Governing Board, being a board member here for Fenton and I'm the new chair for, um, uh, for the operation. Uh, we approved a couple items, for example, uh, pay raises for non-certified staff, approval of an administrators, uh, and so forth. The big takeaway there, um, for me is just, you know, uh, for, uh, Leo being named, uh, the chairperson. So, that's my reporting regards to Nedsec. It will be a little bit, uh, uh, more in-depth next time, being the, the chair of the board for the operation, section of, of Nedsec.
Okay, thank you, James, and congratulations to you and both you and Leo. Policy Committee. Patty, did you want to say a few words?
Sure. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Um, so, yeah, we, uh, we met at 5:30 today to review, uh, 20 policies, 10 of them. Thanks to Sam, where, I mean, they, he broke it down very nicely. Like, uh, five of them are so had just footnote changes. Five more had, uh, you know, a couple other minute changes and then we reviewed, went through 10 new policies with, um, actual changes within the policy and the footnotes and, uh, we are all up to speed.
Okay.
Was there any particular, no, there wasn't anything that, like, dramatically changed that I need to report on? Was there, James?
Just, just to add, Patty, I think you hit everything on, uh, on, on, on the head right there. But this is the first reading. Come June Board Meeting, we're going to ask the board to approve the, 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 the new policies. So, if you have time during the time, we got a month to take a look at it, to look at it again, that would be your second reading. Obviously, if there's question, you ask Patty or Sam in particular, um, for, for further clarification. We recommend that the board approve, uh, these policies, um, for the upcoming, uh, June Board Meeting.
Okay, thank you, Patty. Thank you, James. Yeah, if we could all just review that and be prepared for that for the next meeting, that would be great. Speaking of the next board meeting, that'll be on Wednesday, June 24th, 2020, at 7:00 PM. Does anyone have any new business to discuss?
Nope.
No? Okay, then, uh, we need to go into closed session. So, may I have a, a, uh, motion and a second to go into closed session for the purpose of the appointment, employment compensation, discipline, performance or dismissal of specific employees of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee of the public body or against legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity. However, a meeting to consider an increase in compensation to a specific employee of a public body that is subject to the local government Wage Increase Transparency Act may not be, may not be closed and shall be open to the public and posted and held in accordance with this act, 5 ILCS 120 slash 2 C1 and collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives or deliberations concerning salary schedules, scheduled for one or more classes of employees, 5 ILCS 120 slash 2 C2. May I have a motion, please?
I will make the motion.
Okay, thank you, Mary Ann. May I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you, Jackie. Roll call, please, Mary.
Peyton Howell?
Yes.
Ramirez?
Yes.
Ting Pao Pong?
Yes.
Jalloway?
Yes.
Figueroa?
Yes.
Rego?
Yes.
Weedman?
Yes.
All right.
The next item on the agenda.
Hold on, Paul. Just make sure.
I'm sorry.
Jim Batson, are you ready?
Jim, Jim.
We're ready.
Jim's been there the whole time. All right.
Okay, great. We are back in open session. The next item on the agenda is the Floss Memo of Understanding Contract Extension for One Year. And James?
Uh, just real quickly, as we discussed, uh, for the last, um, month and a half here, uh, I recommend, we recommend to the board, uh, as an administrative team to, uh, extend the Floss, uh, contract for one year via memo of understanding as presented.
Okay, yeah, we discussed that. Anybody have any questions regarding this?
No.
No, and this is going to reflect what they said about not having, adding the additional 25 cents.
That's correct.
Right. Yeah, for equity and flattening that, yep.
Okay, then may I have a motion that the Board of Education approve the Floss Memo of Understanding Contract Extension for One Year as presented?
I motion.
Thank you, Mary Ann. May I have a second?
I will second that.
Thank you, Kit. Uh, roll call, please, Mary.
Peyton Howell?
Yes.
Jalloway?
Yes.
Figueroa?
Yes.
Rego?
Yes.
Ramirez?
Yes.
Ting Pao Pong?
Yes.
Weedman?
Yes. All right, the motion has passed. May I have a motion and a second to adjourn? Thank you, I think, Mary Ann and Jackie. Okay, uh, roll call, please, Mary.
Peyton Howell?
Yes.
Figueroa?
Yes.
Yes.
Ramirez?
Jackie.
Yes. Ting Pao Pong? She's frozen.
She's frozen. Yes.
Jalloway?
Yes.
Weedman?
Yes. Okay, that motion has passed and good night, everyone. Again, thanks. It was a long night.
James, this is a long day for you. We, I appreciate it, James.
Yes, James.